Hello, all, and welcome to the July 15, 2025 City Council Special Meeting. Roll call, please, Brian.
Vice Mayor Solarsino.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Mayor.
Here.
Councilmember Nomura.
Here.
And Mayor Alarcon.
Here. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I'd like to just share that public comment will only be heard concerning the agendized item. And before we move on to the agenda, which is the consideration of an appeal, I'd like to ask any council members if there are any ex parte communication disclosures. If so, that would need to occur at this moment.
Yes, I'll say on July 14 at about 2:00 p.m., I attended a meeting at the Chevron decommissioning site with the following individuals. Chevron Regulatory Affairs Manager Ryan Jones, Corporate Affairs Advisor Mark Cordy Nahabadian, Facility Manager Kevin Dugain, and Padre Associates Environmental Consultant Simon Polter, who showed the decommissioning site and presented with information about the decommissioning process.
I also have an ex parte disclosure to make today. Chevron Facility Managers Ryan Jones and Kevin Dugain, as well as Mark Cordy Nahabedian, and I believe he was the Chevron's Corporate Affairs, invited me to visit the Chevron facility and view the decommissioning plan. We met at Site 1 this afternoon, and Simon Polter of Padre Associates also showed me a history of the plant in photos before leading the group on a walk around the perimeter of the site. Simon explained what remediation would be needed and provided a high-level summary of their cultural resources management plan. We did not discuss tonight's appeal, and this was a listening session for me. The site visit concluded at 2:00 p.m. Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. You were not invited, okay. So moving on to the agenda item, which is the consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to accept and certify an environmental impact report, select the proposed project plus Hilda and Hazel Pipeline Removal Alternative as the preferred project, and approve the development plan and coastal development permit for the proposed Chevron Carpinteria Oil and Gas Processing Facilities decommissioning and remediation project. I will now hand this over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Mayor Alarcon. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm going to be taking you through the staff presentation for tonight's appeal hearing. However, with me, I do want to note that I have our environmental consultant, Luis Perez from MRS Environmental. His team was responsible for preparing the SEQA document for the project and helping with the permits and the entitlements on behalf of the city. And then we also have Cody Sargent here with us from the City Attorney's Office, and both Cody and Luis are available to help answer any technical questions about this project as we get into the appeal. My presentation's going to really focus narrowly on, you know, kind of an overview of the project and then the contents of the appeal as it was submitted on May 15. However, this is a de novo hearing, meaning that the entire project can be looked at and discussed, and so, you know, we are prepared to discuss other parts of the project or answer questions about other aspects of the project or the mitigation measures if there's questions from your council or from the public about other pieces of the project that fall outside of the narrow scope of the appeal itself. And with that, unless there's any questions, I'm going to go ahead and jump right in. So real quick here, just an overview of kind of what we'll touch on here in this presentation. We'll talk a little bit about the history of this project up to the current moment. We'll provide a brief overview of the proposed project itself, as well as the findings of the environmental impact report prepared for the project. We will discuss the two issues that were raised in the appeal, and then our response to those, and then we'll wrap up with staff's recommendation concerning the appeal and the approval of the project. So this project was initially submitted by Chevron back in the fall of 2021, and a little bit under a year later, the city kicked off the EIR process in August of '22 with release of the Notice of Preparation, or NOP, for the EIR. The draft EIR was then completed and released a little bit over a year later in the winter of '23. It was out there for 60 days for a public comment review period, and then it took us up to April of this year to respond to comments and get the final EIR into an adequate shape where we were ready to circulate that and make that available to the public. Following the release of the final EIR, the Planning Commission heard the project in May of this year and approved the project, and then within the 10 days of that Planning Commission action on May 15, an appeal was filed with the city clerk. Talking a little bit about the facility itself, so I think we're all well acquainted with where the facility is here, directly behind us. It sits on about 55 acres here, access from Dump Road. The facility was constructed in the late 1950s to handle offshore production from the Summerland Oil Field. The facility consisted of pipelines from the offshore platforms, onshore processing and storage facilities, and then a number of accessory uses, parking lots, paved areas, offices, other types of structures. Historically, the facility processed as much as 20,000 barrels of oil per day at its peak, as well as 20 million cubic feet per day of natural gas. And the oil was, after being processed here, was then shipped via pipeline down to Ventura for further refining, and the natural gas was metered and then entered into SoCal Gas' The proposed project involves the decommissioning and remediation of the entire facility. That includes both an onshore portion and then as well as some offshore components that cross the bluffs and Sandy Beach and continue out through state waters. For the onshore piece, the project includes the removal of all existing surface and subsurface equipment, piping, and structures, removal of concrete foundations, asphalt, oil spray, and road base, excavation and remediation of any impacted soils underlying the facility in accordance with the facility's remedial action plan, recycling and disposal of all materials that are removed, and then restoration of portions of the site in accordance with the site restoration plan. And the restoration component at the end there really involves regrading the site to its approximate natural topography and then reseeding the area with native plants. You can see here on the slide, highlighted in pink, the facilities that would be included in that onshore decommissioning phase of the project. So it's a lot of the piping and processing equipment over here on the east end of the site, along with the big tank that sits directly behind us, and then some of these smaller accessory structures scattered around here. For the offshore portion of the project, this would involve cleaning out and flushing the pipelines that run from the offshore platforms into the facility. There's several different pipeline bundles that come into the facility, and then removal of those pipelines out to the three nautical mile state waters limit. This also involves, in some cases, either removing in full or abandoning in place the portions of the pipelines that cross through Tar Pits Park or through other parts of the carpenteria bluffs here within the project area, and also across the sandy beach. Again, there would be recycling and disposal of all the materials removed, and where needed restoration in accordance with the site restoration plan. And this offshore piece, so anything on the sandy beach and out into the waters, is covered under the permit jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission rather than the city. So even though we own the tidelands out to approximately two, two and a half miles, permit jurisdiction for that part will fall with the Coastal Commission. As mentioned, an environmental impact report was prepared for this project. The EIR concluded that there could be significant and unavoidable impacts, what are otherwise called Class 1 impacts, related to hazards, biology, and water resources. And what these relate to is the potential for a spill or an upset during the decommissioning activities themselves, recognizing that despite best efforts to clean facilities, remove any residual oil or contaminants, there's still a chance, however remote, that there could be some kind of unanticipated accident during the decommissioning activities that could result in these unavoidable significant impacts for hazards, biology, and water resources. The EIR also concluded that there would be significant but mitigable impacts, or what were referred to as Class 2 impacts, related to aesthetics, biology, cultural resources, greenhouse gases, geology, hazards, and noise. And most of these impacts are related to temporary impacts during the decommissioning activities themselves. So they're finite in nature. Nevertheless, they do need mitigation measures to reduce those impacts or the severity of those impacts to less than significant levels. In addition to the proposed project, several alternatives were analyzed and considered as part of the EIR. There's the no-project alternative, which would essentially be just leaving the facility alone, as is. There was a full-removal alternative, which is the proposed project plus removal of several legacy orphaned oil wells that are on the property that predate Chevron, as well as trying to cap several natural seeps that occur on the property. And then there's the proposed project plus Hilda and Hazel Pipeline Removal Alternative. And we'll call that one Alternative 3 here for brevity purposes. Alternative 3 came about as sort of a hybrid alternative of the proposed project and the full-removal alternative. During the public review process for the draft EIR, we received comments from California Coastal Commission and Calgem indicating that aspects of the full-removal alternative were not technically feasible. So, for instance, in the case of the legacy or orphaned wells, they don't belong to Chevron, and as long as Chevron doesn't touch them, doesn't do work on or over them, the city can't require Chevron to take responsibility for decommissioning those wells. Likewise, with the natural seeps, those are a natural part of the geology here, and in that sense, you know, there isn't a nexus really to require the property owner to take responsibility for trying to cap those or mediate those. And so ultimately, Alternative 3 was developed to take the other aspects of the full-removal alternative and couple those with the proposed project. And really, the main distinction is the addition of this additional bundle of pipelines that run into the facility from a former offshore platform that was decommissioned a number of years ago. And at the time, the pipelines were allowed to be abandoned in place, and recognizing that there's some benefit here to getting those pipelines removed or removing that hazard once and for all, that alternative was developed and included for consideration. So when this project went to the Planning Commission on May 5 of this year, we held a public hearing to consider approval of the project and certification of the EIR. Public comments at the hearing focused primarily on potential impacts from the project to the Harbor Seal haulout and rookery, as well as the issues that were raised in the appeal that we're hearing tonight. Ultimately, the Planning Commission voted 4-0 to accept and certify the project EIR, to select Alternative 3 as the preferred project, and to approve the development plan and coastal development permit. Following the hearing on May 15, Mr. Frank Arredondo filed an appeal challenging the Planning Commission's approval of the project and raising two issues. The first issue had to do with the categorization of some of the cultural resources mitigation measures. Mr. Arredondo argued that several of the cultural resource mitigation measures that were included in the EIR are required procedures or regulatory requirements and therefore were mischaracterized as mitigation. The second appeal issue that was raised had to do with the qualifications of the monitors that would be required to be on-site during periods of ground disturbance. With respect to that item or issue, the appellant argued that the EIR requires the monitors to be members of the federally recognized Saninaz Chumash tribe. And in our response to this, both of these appeals, which are discussed a little bit more in-depth in your staff report, we find or believe that the appellant's issues are without merit. With respect to the first appeal issue, we do believe that regulatory compliance can and often is characterized as mitigation. There's guidance along these lines, both in SEQA guidelines and in a number of court cases, that uphold the use of regulatory or procedural requirements as an appropriate type of mitigation measure. It's also standard practice of the city to do this. In fact, on nearly every environmental document that we have, there's typically inclusion of some of these regulatory requirements where it's helpful to, you know, to ensure that impacts are properly addressed and reduced to less than significant levels. And in fact, even in the same EIR, you can find other examples of where regulatory requirements have been included as mitigation measures. So for example, in the biological resources section, there's a mitigation measure that requires the applicant to obtain their necessary approvals and permits from California Department of Fish and Wildlife, from Regional Water Quality Control Board, some of these other regulatory agencies that might have oversight over the project, and as part of that oversight can also apply additional protective conditions or requirements on the permits themselves. Also, I think it's worth pointing out here that in the case of the cultural resources mitigation measures, we've really tried to develop a suite of mitigation measures that are intended to work together collectively to address impacts to cultural resources and to make sure those impacts are reduced to less than significant levels. So we have, you know, a number of measures that run the gamut, from requiring survey work and kind of identification of exclusion areas upfront, to having monitors out there during periods of ground disturbance, to having a plan in place for what to do if cultural resources are discovered, including data recovery procedures and curation procedures for anything that's found that's significant. There's also measures in place to have somebody, excuse me, a cultural anthropologist or, you know, somebody along those lines lined up and ready in the event that human remains are discovered. And so, again, this is kind of in keeping with how we've handled cultural resource mitigation measures on a number of other projects, and we believe it's in keeping with the general practice allowed under SEQA to include some of these procedural and regulatory requirements when they help to support an overall suite of mitigation measures. I'd also just point out with respect to this item, that as part of your public comments this evening, public comment letters in anticipation of the hearing, you did receive a letter from Chevron indicating their agreement and support for the mitigation measures as drafted, as well as letters from the four tribes that were consulted throughout the project indicating not only their support for the project, but their support for the mitigation measures as crafted as well. Moving on to the second issue that was raised in Mr. Arredondo's appeal concerning the requirement that the cultural resource monitors be members of the Saninaz Chumash tribe, we believe that this is a misunderstanding or, you know, misconstruction of what's in the actual EIR itself. So there is discussion in the EIR disclosing that the Saninaz Band of Chumash did request that they have a tribal representative present for monitoring. However, the actual mitigation measure itself does not stipulate that the Native American monitor needs to be affiliated with any particular tribe. Instead, it says that the monitoring shall be conducted under the supervision of a county-approved archaeologist and a Native American representative with minimum professional quality standards as set forth by the Secretary of the Interior. So there is not a requirement or a specification that that Native American monitor be affiliated with a certain tribe. Additionally, Chevron has agreed to have additional monitors on-site as part of the cultural resources monitoring plan. That's one of the mitigation measures included in our suite of measures. And under that CRMP, each of the advising tribes would be able to hire a monitor, an authorized monitor basically of their choosing, provided they meet the minimum qualifications to be on-site as well. So again, we're not specifying that that person be a member of any particular tribe or even a member of those tribes. And so, again, we believe that, you know, Mr. Arredondo has misconstrued what this mitigation measure requires in terms of the qualifications for those monitors. With that, I'm going to go ahead and wrap it up and try to keep this short and sweet. We are available, as I said, to answer any questions if you have anything you want to follow up on. Staff is recommending that your council adopt the attached resolution 6415, thereby denying the appeal that was filed by Mr. Arredondo and approving the development plan and coastal development permit for the project and accepting and certifying the EIR as previously approved by the Planning Commission. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions from council?
In terms of how advising tribes are selected, what is that process like?
Madam Mayor, councilmember, the AB 52 process, it's a fairly well-defined consultation process, and there are a lot of legal parameters that must be followed by all jurisdictions in order to participate in what is considered to be a nation-to-nation consultation. In this particular case, well, in all cases, one of the requirements is that a jurisdiction such as the City of Carpinteria holds a list of folks that are Native American-recognized tribes that want to participate in the AB 52 process at any time that there is a project out there that may have some cultural resources impacts. And so, as such, the city holds that list, and once there is a project, they send out information. And in this case, we waited until the application was found complete. You cannot really move forward with a notice of preparation until you have an application complete, but that also triggers the necessity to have that consultation so that the EIR process doesn't move too far down the road without having that consultation and understanding what that nation wants to do about their potential impacts to cultural resources. So in April of 2022, the letters were sent out to all the tribes that had requested to participate in the AB 52 process. Mr. Arredondo was not part of that group because he had not requested to participate in that. So then now we get involved into a process where one tribe responds, and with that specific tribe, we engage into a consultation nation-to-nation. We had a number of meetings with them, and we resolved to address some of the issues and concerns that they had as part of the mitigation measures that were to be developed as part of the EIR, and specifically the development of the cultural resources management plan that they would have substantial input in, provided that they met a series of requirements. That cultural resources management plan included a number of requirements, and so all of those would have to be included in order for them to approve that resolution. Since that time, they continue to meet, you know, Chevron has also approached other tribes in the same process so that Chevron is having that conversation. The AB 52 consultation is a tribe-to-tribe, a nation-to-nation consultation. So the City of Carp is involved with that tribe in that. And eventually, the final resolution is the submittal of the plan by Chevron that we will discuss with the tribe in order to ensure that all of those concerns have been resolved. And so all of that is still part of the process that we have to go through. Now, going back to Mr. Arredondo, at one point, months after the, when the draft EIR had been released, he approached the city to request that he wanted to participate in a consultation process per AB 52. At that point, we informed him that that process was no longer available because that had been, as I explained earlier, that had been expired much earlier in the process. The city had complied with all the requirements needed. However, we recognized that he had an interest in the project, and so it was offered that we could have a consultation with him, not AB 52 consultation, but a process by which he could provide input and comment on the EIR and, you know, any other aspect of the cultural resources pieces of it. And in fact, he collaborated with us, and there were a number of things that were done as part of the release of the draft EIR as a result of that consultation with Mr. Arredondo. But a specific AB 52 consultation is very regimented. It has those requirements that I mentioned earlier, and he could not be part of that, per se, at that point, once that EIR was released. Hopefully.
Yeah, no, that, thank you. That's helpful. And then, so the four letters that we got received, the support letters for the cultural mitigation plan, so those occurred not as part of the AB 52 process, or were those evaluations done separately?
So that's correct. So what happens is that Chevron decides to, you know, in coordination with the city, to approach other tribes to see if they had any specific interest in participating, recognizing that you want to address all these concerns. There are some sensitive resources, and so they went to all the tribes that were available. However, the AB 52 consultation process is just with the Saninaz.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. So it sounds like there were a number of tribes that were involved, one with the AB 52 process, but then others gave their approval of the cultural mitigation plan.
Correct. And it farther shows the desire to include as many folks that are interested in this issue as possible.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. One is, what's the difference between a remedial action that you take to, you know, lessen an impact? What's the difference whether it's called a mitigation measure or a regulation? I mean, does that have any real difference on the ground?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clark, you know, I think that we spend a lot of time as practitioners trying to figure out what the best way is to mitigate impacts of a project. In many cases, there are policies that are part of, for example, in cultural resources, the city has a number of policies that help guide how you're going to react to the finding of a cultural resource that is sensitive. There are a number of well-known requirements that have been used for many years as to what do you do when you find cultural resources, and those are codified by the Native American Heritage Commission. There are a number of guidelines as to what do you do, the type of Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3 testing that you do for cultural resources. And so whether those are regulations or whether those are mitigation measures, I think what we have to focus on is that what is the ultimate result? Is the impact mitigable? Can we come up with sufficient mitigation by way of a series of regulations, a series of policies, a series of well-known management practices to couple together enough mitigation to ensure that that impact is mitigated? So I don't know if I'm responding to your question, and maybe it's more of a legal question about whether you define a regulation as a mitigation measure or not. What I can tell you is that we readily use regulations as mitigation measures, and there are pieces within the SEQA guidelines that specifically say that you can do so.
Yeah. Through the mayor, councilmember Clark, just to add to that, as Nick mentioned, the staff rapport. staff report, SEQA case law and SEQA guidelines specifically state that compliance can, compliance with regulation can be characterized as mitigation. But I think to your point, you're right that practically speaking, SEQA allows that you could, you could go about it two separate ways. In one case, you could assume that the project will, you know, by its nature, comply with all laws and analyze the impacts that way. Or, as was done here and as SEQA allows for, you could require that compliance with regulation as part of the mitigation and then analyze the impacts. Ultimately, the, you know, the, how the impacts are addressed and analyzed is going to be the same, just kind of to err on the side of caution here, and as the city has done elsewhere, the compliance with regulation is included as mitigation to ensure that it's complied with.
All right. Thank you. And then I have a couple of questions on, since this is a de novo hearing on the harbor seal section. I think, I think I read, but I couldn't, I wasn't sure, there's so many pages on the iPad, that we do, that we are not doing work at night in the rookery area. Is that correct?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, that's correct. Now, you know, in all aspects of a project like this, there are complications. There are very limited moments in time where you can actually do the project of removal within the surf area during low tides, and, you know, there are very few windows for them to be able to do that. And so the rule is, you're not going to do any nighttime work. And that's, but there is a possibility that there may be a very small window where something has to be completed that may require them to do some additional work, and that is provided for, and there's additional mitigation that is included in the event that that happens.
All right.
And I'm sorry, but I just want to make the point that you have to keep in mind that what you're trying to do when you're doing something like that is to prevent any additional damage to other resources or to that same resource by having to come back the following day or waiting a year to try to come back and do, you know, parts of the project that otherwise would not be able to be completed. So there are, there are some frictions there, and we have taken all that into consideration. The applicant has taken that into consideration to ensure that all impacts are minimized to the maximum extent we can.
Yeah. Okay. And I'll just say, for the interest of my colleagues, it is important that the seals be able to rest at night if, since they're being disturbed during the day, you know, so. But I understand what you're saying. And then the other question I had about the seals was, there was a mention of screens being erected, and I was very interested in how those would be deployed and where they would be deployed.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clark, one of the issues with this is that it is included as one of the options for mitigation, but we also have to be mindful that the erection of those barriers could also present an impact. And so it is not something that will be done in all cases. It will be done in the event that it is decided that it would cost less impacts to erect those barriers rather than proceeding without them, because it is additional work. You're constructing something, and that construction itself could cause impacts.
Yeah, that was, that was one of my concerns. And I guess, you know, not knowing where they're going to be put up, it's hard to guess what impact it might have on the seals. But, you know, I don't, I don't imagine that the screens would really impact any noise issues. They're, seals have very acute hearing. And then there's, there's always a risk of stuff that's put on the beach, no matter how well we think it's secured, that moves around in the waves and the tidal surge as well as the wind. And so, you know, we may have to spend a lot of time taking, taking the stuff, putting the stuff up and taking it down and chasing it and putting it back up, and all that, all that's a disturbance. And then there's the risk that that stuff could actually hit the seals or really scare, when it's flying around, scare the seals in the water. Anyway, thank you very much.
Cas, a quick related question, just to confirm. So it sounds like there's going to be a trained, on the subject of the seals, a trained marine wildlife monitor on-site every day of the construction work, and then also coordination with the seal watch volunteers. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So it's not, it sounds like there's partnerships with a couple of different entities to try to approach the issue of the harbor seal protection from a few different angles.
That's correct. And in fact, there is a, the applicant is going to have their own monitor, their own biological monitor. The city is going to have its own monitor, monitoring what the applicant is doing. In addition to that, the city is consulting with the seal rookery folks so that they can provide information or ideas as to how we can improve mitigation. I know we saw a comment earlier today about how they're not experts. They're not intended to supplant the experts that are going to be on-site or the monitors that are going to be on-site, but we're responding to their request and also the understanding that they are integral parts of this picture and protection of the seals. And so the city wants to keep avenues open to ensure that they get as much of their knowledge throughout the years of being out there day after day and being able to contribute to additional mitigation if needed.
I appreciate that because I know there is some community concern, so I want to make sure to, that we call out all the different mitigations that are part of this, this plan. I think they sound like they're very robust, so thank you.
I have a question. Mac, you had shared that some mitigation measures would require regulation in order to ensure that it occurs properly. Can you give an example of that, please?
Let me see. Let me just pull up the EIR here. Just give me one.
Thank you.
And I think, I think Nick, actually, you mentioned one from the biological resources section, if you have that handy.
And I'm sorry, I called you Mac.
No, that's okay.
My apologies. Cody.
So if I may, Madam Mayor, there are a number of requirements that are part of the EIR. Like, for example, there is requirement for dust control. The Air Pollution Control District has regulations about dust control, and they sent a letter in as part of their comments to the environmental document. And so we have included all the requirements that they have as part of their regulations as part of the dust control plan that the applicant has to comply with. We talked earlier, the one that Nick had mentioned earlier, it was related to BIO, which requires the applicant to submit the proof that they have permits from all these other jurisdictions, the Coastal Commission, the National Marine Fisheries Service, the Fish and Wildlife Service, so that the city can then verify and ensure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing with those other agencies in addition to the city requirements. So those are some good examples of regulations or regulatory requirements that become part of the mitigation measures because the city wants to ensure that they're complying with all the different things that are out there. A lot of the cultural resources that are in question as part of the appeal, they're not necessarily regulations. They're policies, they are requirements that the city has, they are best management practices. You know, there are a number of things that have proven to work over time to mitigate cultural resources impacts.
And so the specific example that Nick had mentioned was mitigation measure BIO 1A, which requires that prior to the commencement of any of the decommissioning activities, the applicant has to obtain compliance with a variety of different agencies, USFWS, NOAA Fisheries, CDFW, for any components of the project that could potentially, you know, impact federal or state-listed plant species or animal protected species. So it's kind of an example, like Luis was mentioning, where the city includes mitigation to ensure that the applicant is complying with regulations that other agencies may have.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
Okay. Seeing none. We will now move on to officially opening the public hearing, and we can start with the appellant. He has requested from what is typically 15 minutes to 25 minutes, and of course, the applicant will also have that opportunity should they choose to. And with that, welcome.
Thank you. Let me take a deep breath. Yeah. My name is Frank, Frank Arredondo, Kaysanskumu, and I am appealing this project. Originally, when it first came up, it was about moving words from this section of the EIR to this section, right? It'd still be enforced, wasn't an issue about enforcement, but where they belonged. And after receiving, seeing the staff report that came out, which includes staff's comments as well as the, Chevron's response to comments, it made me realize that I was missing a big chunk of citation. So with the weekend, in the past four or five days, a good 15 hours a day, I've dove into it, now produce a document that's 48 pages long, which I emailed to you all and have issued a hard copy. Do you all have one? And you guys all have one. And the focus is now that the final EIR contains significant impacts to cultural resources and tribal cultural resources. They have not been mitigated, and this was an error in the Planning Commission's discretion. So putting it out for it first. I want you to know who I am before we get started, though, so it's important to understand where I come from here. So my name is Frank Arredondo. I'm the tribal chair of Kaysanskumu. I'm a lineal descendant of the Chumash Territory, a member of the Native American Heritage Commission's Most Likely Descendants list for the Chumash Territory. I'm listed on the Professional Consultants list for Native Americans in the Santa Barbara County. There's only me in the reservation on that list. I have confidentiality agreements with the Central Coast Information Center that contain archaeological survey reports, as well as several regional government agencies that have allowed me to have access to cultural resource information, including CRM firms. As a Native American descendant of the Chumash Territory enlisted on the Heritage MLD contact list, under which the law requires me and a handful of other individuals, less than 10, to provide recommendations on the disposition of human remains when found during development projects. I take my inclusion onto this list with great responsibility. To honor that responsibility, I've actively participated in the prevention of disturbance of my ancestors through the review of SEQA development projects. For the last 19 years, I've actively reviewed planning and development environmental documents for accuracy and completeness to preserve cultural resources, uphold the laws meant for protection for Native American rights and authority, to make sure SEQA guidelines are being implemented in accordance with law. I started my educational career to supplement that in 2006. UCLA, under federal union law, and every course on cultural resource management, from NEPA, NAGPRA, National Historic Preservation Act, to Archaeological Resource Preservation Act, everything to do with SEQA and cultural resources. From there, I went on to acquire several AA and BA degrees in anthropology, Native American Studies, geospatial analysis, and attending school for a master's degree in order to meet the Secretary of Interior's professional standards for archaeology. Under SEQA, it allows that person to determine significance. To complicate my educational studies and administrative work, I also started work as a native monitor in 2006. I've been doing so professionally, full-time, since then. 19 years in that time, I've worked with every tribe in the community, trained two of those four in cultural resource management. Various projects, as well as been a field manager for the Thomas Fire Cleanup and Woolsey Fire Cleanup, in order to reduce impacts to cultural resources. The review work of environmental documents, cultural resource sections in these EIRs, doing that work, I was able to see how those conditions and mitigations that are being proposed, how they roll out real-time out on the job site. So I get firsthand knowledge on how it works and gives me a unique position to weigh the difference of a project and its ability to reduce impacts to cultural resources. I hope these credentials I provided you in recognizing the substantial evidence supporting what I am presenting you to here today is a fair argument and not just speculation or unsubstantiated opinion. Let me flip the page. So we present before you today that there is a substantial and fair argument that the mitigation measures proposed in this project can properly defer mitigation of the project impacts on cultural resources and are insufficient to avoid or reduce those impacts to less-than-significant level. Public Resource Code Section 21081.6 and SEQA Guidelines 15097 basically talk about mitigation monitoring reporting program should be adopted for all significant impacts. And the other section is details on public access. There is not one for this, this cultural section. They're substituting it with the CRMP. You have to have both. You can't have just one. The EIR has failed to adhere to SEQA Guidelines 15126.4A 1A. The document does not provide any clarification of which mitigation measures were provided by who. They only were addressed, they showed, addressed through the implementation of all of them. The EIR does not evaluate the mitigation measures as to how they reduce impact. It only merely states that it does. Failure to evaluate the effect of these mitigation measures in the impact analysis violates legal requirements to provide a legal argument supported by substantial evidence for each impact conclusion in the environmental document. And this is codified by a court case, not codified, this is supported by a court case Lotus versus Department of Transportation 2014. This is an error of discretion by the Planning Commission. We conclude, due to numerous errors and deficiencies in the cultural resource section, this document cannot be adopted. It must be corrected to address all the impacts. But let me go to the staff comments that were made. I'm trying not to hit them all, but, so in the section of the staff comments, we identified eight topics the staff raised and their staff response relevant to this appeal. Some of the responses are further dated, responded to throughout the document that I sent to you as well, specifically discussing mitigation measures. But we do include a reference to three different documents that support our arguments here. One, a court case, Save Agora Cornell No versus the City of Agora Hills. Two, a document called Environmental Management Office Significance and Mitigation Under California Environmental Quality Act, November 2016. And three, Lotus versus the Department of Transportation 2014. All three of those documents have significant bearing on this project because it's essentially the same thing. Everything that was wrong with those is what's wrong with this. The Environmental Management Office Significance Mitigation Under California Environmental Quality Act, that document was, provides general guidance to ensure that the significance determinations under SEQA are made without consideration of mitigation measures, and that minimization, avoidance, and mitigation measures are consistently and properly labeled and categorized throughout the environmental documents. Toward that end, this guidance discusses the distinctions between, one, mitigation measures relate to significant impacts, two, avoidance mitigation measures and impacts determined not to be significant, and elements of a project are project features. The guidance was developed because of the lawsuit of Lotus versus Department of Transportation, where the court found the EIR violated SEQA by incorporating proposed mitigation measures into the description of the project and then basing its conclusion of less-than-significant impacts in part of the mitigation measures. The court found this issue and properly compressed the analysis of impacts and mitigation measures into a single issue. Essentially, that's what we've done here today. Staff's comment number one, Oakland versus Oakland. Question was about unreasonable compliance with the use of regulations. The issue with Oakland Heritage Alliance versus Oakland was an issue of conflicting evidence determining who has the better argument when in dispute whether adverse effects were being mitigated or could be better mitigated. Comparing building codes to archaeological resources, which is non-renewable, is not a viable comparison because that's what they're doing. The SEQA guidelines do provide specific recommendations for mitigation measures, and the EIR does not evaluate those mitigation measures on how they reduce an impact. They just simply say that they do. So, I've already stated that. In that court case, the judge agreed that those regulations could be used to adopt it for building codes between seismic studies. We're not talking about that. We're talking about, these are not mitigations. We're not comparing which is better. We're saying they're just not. City's, staff's comment number two, city's pattern to use regulatory measures as mitigation. And in reference to the cultural monitoring, that's their emphasis for using that, but what they're describing is something called a standard plan or feature of a project. What I mean by that, the city of Carpinteria's general plan, the local plan-- What I mean by that, the City of Carpinteria's general plan, the local plan, use plan, has an implement, implementation, implementation policy seventy-eight. It says for the requirements for qualified archaeologists and Native American observer acceptable to the city to carry out monitoring. Because of that, the mitigation measures, blah, 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 I lost track of myself right there. Based on the local plan and, culture, blah, general plan, local coastal land use plan, implement policy seventy-eight, monitoring is part of the project and no longer a mitigation. The suite of measures intended to work together for mitigations, well, the suite of measures do not address the impacts to resources. We've broken down in detail in the document for you today of the proposed mitigation measures. All they do is identify, describe methods and procedures. They don't actually reduce the impact. And, and this is a violation of failure to violate the mitigation measures in the analysis supported by the Lotus versus Department of Transportation case. Another comment that was made, cultural one B and two, one C, are necessary elements for preservation and data recovery. Monitoring, creation of maps where resources may exist, procedures for halt, halting work to avoid impacts, worker training to insert preservation data, recovery procedures that are implemented. What they're describing is called a post-review discovery plan. The discussion is not about a mitigation measure, but a plan on what you do before you find something. This is used by BLM, Caltrans, National Park Service, and the plan is used as a method to reduce the effect in a case of accidentally discovered resources. I include that plan in the document, and I actually might have it here, because I do want to say what it is. Bottom line is just monitoring, okay? Everything that's laid out, laid out, monitoring, it is in my document report. So, mitigation measure, cultural resource one D, provides an exclusion zone to ensure that extent feasible, cultural resources will be placed. If there's no proposed excavation or grating work in that place of area, potentially intact surfaces are, then there's no significant impact. If measures are included to reduce the impacts are not defined significant, then they should be labeled as avoidance or minimization measures, not mitigation measures. Most of the open areas where they're going to not remove any infrastructure will be used as staging. That's part of the plan. I mean, you got to have someplace to park the trucks and put things are in. Are you causing an impact? No. Because you're not digging in that area, do you get credit for calling that exclusion? No, you don't get credit for that. Mitigation measure one E calls for data recovery. Now, we don't contest that that is not a mitigation measure. In fact, it's likely the only one that's actually feasible to carry out. The question is whether it's enough to reduce the impact. We don't think so. There's also a question about the curation mitigation, which might fall under deferred mitigation. There's criteria needed to be met in order to curate material, and part of the CRM suggestion was that everything's going to the curation facility. Well, can that be confirmed that that can happen? We don't know. You're waiting till later to find out. One of the issues that, one of the big, able, one of the big court cases that really stood out was the Save the Agora Cornell No versus the City of Agora. You know, I forgot to press next, didn't I? Let's see, let's skip that one, go on to the next one. Oh, yes, the MMRP. It's, I already said it's not being adopted for cultural resources, been used for maybe something else, but you're required to adopt it as part of the law. This tells you exactly what's included. These are provisions, mechanisms for implementation, compliance. It gives the opportunity for the public to comment on. Your CRMP is not being made public at all, and it shouldn't. It should be, actually. Can you hit next on that one? Do not dissuade measures proposed, next on that one. Cultural Resource Management, a post-review discovery action plan just outlines the procedures to follow when previously unknown and unexpected cultural resources are discovered during construction or other ground disturbing activities, even when cultural resources review has been completed. The plan assures proper assessment and protection and mitigation of those resources, minimizing potential impacts and legal issues. Notice that mitigation is separate from what that plan is doing. So, this is a summary from that court case, Save the Agora Hills, Agora Hills. One of the, it's a project where they were going to actually grade, and the site was going to be completely destroyed. It didn't say that it was going to be destroyed. It sort of danced around the idea, but, and renowned archaeologist, Dr. King, came out and he said, yeah, it's going to be destroyed. One of the, these are the things that came up in that case. They required monitoring and data recovery as mitigation measures. That's what they have, just like this one. But every single one of those items play out, provides no analysis whether archaeological site can be avoided, not discussed. We're just going to plow through it. The city is not providing discretion if avoidance is not possible. Does not specify any performance criteria, evaluating the feasibility of avoidance as an alternative to excavation. City has not shown the record, in the record themselves, defining the boundaries of archaeological site. Now, I know Padre did a site record update, because I was there. If you didn't know, I worked as the native monitor from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-three on this site. I know where everything is. I know where all the, I found most of the resources, the pestle, the obsidian. Oh, my gosh. I know where everything is. Nothing in the record suggests the city attempted to define these boundaries to determine if the site material could be avoided. A phase-three data recovery program does not include any substantive requirements. The environmental document does not consider whether a large-scale excavation program would be feasible, doesn't talk about that, whether alternative measures could be effectively mitigate and the harm caused by the loss of the site. One of the things that Dr. King comments on and supports a fair argument, that the proposed monitoring of the project, extensive grating activities as mandated in Condition One, will be ineffective to avoid the site and the significance to it. We also contend that proposed monitoring will not be effective to avoid the significant impacts. He talked about phase-three data recovery plan improperly defers mitigation of the project impacts to the side by delaying formation of several components of the data recovery plan until some future time. Same thing in this project. We don't have a plan now, it's deferred later. The mitigation measures one through to B simply provide generalized list of measures to be undertaken by qualified archaeologists or monitor, but does not set forth any performance standards or guidelines to ensure that these measures will be effective. The EIR calls for future preparation of a technical report within a year, and they shall include that in the CRMP, which is not available for public disclosure to vet whether this is going to meet its goals. Yet, the environmental document does not explain how undefined monitoring and reporting plan would mitigate the potentially significant effects on the cultural resources. Just says that it does. The ER does not specify evaluating efficiency of the plan. There's no indication the record was impractical or infish, infeasible to the city to articulate specific performance criteria of the data recovery measures at the time of this approval. They haven't brought that up yet. This is a substantial and fair argument, that the mitigation measures proposed in the project improperly defer mitigation, et cetera, et cetera. We can go next. I think I repeated something there. Let's get into confidentiality. One of the things that has come up is the CRMP is now claiming to be confidential, not available for public review. Even me, with all my credentials, I'm not allowed to see it. Why? I don't know. But confidentiality of cultural research information, including locations, details about resources, or even the existence of certain sites, can be confidential to protect them from vandalism, looting, unauthorized disturbance. You think I'm going to do any of those things? Where's your proof? Tribal cultural resources, it's defined as a site, feature, places, landscapes, places, objects with cultural value. All of this are locational tangible information. The CRMP is a bunch of paperwork, so directives, on how you're going to carry out mitigation monitoring. What's so sensitive about that? These are all the codes that are listed that, and, you know, enforce that. Can we hit next? Every single one of those codes talk about all locational information. Now, in this part-
Mr. Ardone, I just want to give you a quick time check. You have about five more minutes.
Oh, goodness. Okay, so, there is a criteria that when in consultation, information received from a tribe to a government, as a government to government, I'm sorry, not nation to nation, the correction is government to government, that information should be kept confidential in lieu of those codes. Those codes say location. Now, we don't want to hear about the conversations that are happening, but we do want to know what are the plans? What's taking place? That is what's available. It seems to me that staff is using this confidentiality as a blanket cover to not see this, this document, and I think that's incorrect. Well, it is. It says it right there. And secondly, consultation grants that Privacy Act. Consultation concluded in, before December of two thousand and twenty-three. The CRMP is being created by Chevron and other groups that are not part of consultation outside of the, after the consultation had been closed. So, are they still granted confidentiality? No, they're not. It's outside of AB fifty-two consultation. Can we hit next? Those codes are all supposed to be consistent with government codes, seventy-two, nine-hundred, which I've boldly labeled the, the things that are to be confidential, and that's graves, cemeteries, places. Nothing of that talks about policies and procedures. Can we hit next? We get back to tribal consultation. Under AB fifty-two, the bill itself, chaptered by nine oh five statutes, two oh four, it was created to give non-federally recognized tribes the ability to classify themselves as tribes during consultation in the AB fifty-two process. Legally speaking, once consultation is concluded, they go back to their original designation, Native American organization, organization, whatever. But outside of consultation, they don't afford any other rights or privileges. Informally, we can call them tribes, but legally, under the regulations and laws, they're not. They're organizations outside of consultation. It's all based on that. Can we hit next? The fact that Chevron dealt with them outside means that they're dealing with an organization, there are, Chevron's a private entity, and they prepared a document on how they're going to monitor, do monitoring, the CRMP, and now calling it sensitive information, because it was done through consultation. There is none, because consultation is between those tribes and the lead agency, the government, not a private agency. There's no, doesn't fold over to the private institution. The other thing is that these non, these organizations, how they got onto the list, I know, because I have the paperwork, and they use me as an example. I complained. Anyways, in case of these three groups that are mentioned, we're not talking about the federally recognized tribe. The inclusion in the contact list was as a California Native American tribe whose representation is through a nonprofit organization dedicated to the general governments. Go ahead and hit this next. The highlighted yellow, if you can see that, are the sections. These are all the criteria at the top, what you have to say you are in order to get on that list. They don't qualify for any other stuff. I mean, most of that stuff requires you to show documentation and, you know, tribal roles. They didn't pick that. They picked a nonprofit, and the supporting information were meeting minutes, their bylaws, things like that. So, are we affording someone who's not in the AB fifty-two consultation process the right of privilege of confidentiality protected for those tribes under AB fifty-two with a private entity? Is that what you're doing? That's outside of what, you're giving it to these nonprofits. Please sit next. And I think I'm almost done. In conclusion, there's a violation of several SEQA requirements, all listed up there. The EIR does not evaluate the mitigation measures. There's a significant impact on cultural resources. In my document, I do outline every single one of the staff's response with court cases that refute it. One of the things, I will say, that the applicant brought up is a court case in LA, Povona, two thousand and four. It's kind of what I got started in this stuff. They, they use monitoring as a mitigation, but they had already dug up a bunch of bodies, and they didn't have any place to put them, so, they kind of was, they got narrowed into a corner. But the industry changed because of that. Certain things changed because of that. The court cases that I brought up to you are most recent. You can't use monitoring as a mitigation. It's not. It's an after-the-fact. So, I wish I had more time. There's so much I spent on this, but I can't, I can't talk anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ardone. Appreciate, appreciate it. We will now hear from the applicant.
My name is Mark Corte Nahabedian. I'm the Corporate Affairs Advisor for Chevron on the West Coast Decommissioning Project, which includes this decommissioning project here in Carpinteria. I also have the privilege of leading our engagement with tribal communities, both leadership federally, state-recognized tribes, as well as non, as community members as well. Thanks for the opportunity to address city council in facilitating this important public process. I'd like to thank the city, staff, the Planning Commission, and the many agencies, scientists, engineers, members of our community, who have contributed to the development of this final environmental impact report for the decommissioning and remediation of the Carpinteria Oil and Gas Processing Facility. We understand the City of Carpinteria has received this appeal, and that that appeal is based on two central issues related to cultural resources as detailed in the city staff presentation. Neither of those claims is supported. The FEIR does not designate or identify a specific organization to conduct the cultural monitoring. It is well-settled that mitigation measures may include procedures and legally required actions. We accordingly respectfully request that the city council deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Department certification of the final EIR. We have been working with the tribal leadership and communities since two thousand and twenty-two on the decommissioning and remediation of this facility, and have engaged with both tribes and community members from the tribal community in a variety of formats, including listening sessions, site tours, one-on-one conversations, sponsored training opportunities, and community and leadership roundtables to share information about the project, to learn about tribal priorities associated with decommissioning, and inform decommissioning activities at the site. Complementing the city's AB fifty-two consultation process, we have been working iterally, iteratively with tribal leadership identified from the Native American Heritage Commission, the NAHC, including the San Ynez Band of Chumash Indians, the Coastal Band of the Chumash Nation, Barbaranio-Vintorano Band of Mission Indians, and the Barbaranio Band of Chumash Indians, which collectively, we call the advising tribes, and it's separate and distinct from the city's AB fifty-two processes, well summarized previously. We have collaborated with these advising tribes to co-develop the Cultural Resources Management Plan for this site, which serves as the primary mitigation measure for potential impacts to cultural resources outlined in the final EIR. While these plans are confidential under SEQA, the advising tribes have provided us authorization to share specific language from the CRMP to address the misconceptions in the appeal, as well as letters of support for the cultural resources mitigation measures in the final EIR, and in particular, for the Cultural Resources Management Plan, stating their satisfaction with this process, and that the cultural resources on the site are effectively protected by the plans that we have developed together. We are proud of the relationships we have built with the tribal communities and the Cultural Resources Management Plan that we have developed through this collaboration with the advising tribes, and we value the participation and perspective from tribes on the decommissioning project. We look forward to continuing to work with the advising tribes and their designated representatives throughout the duration of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open up public comment. I have one speaker slip. Suzanne Melhume.
Yes, once again, thank you for letting me speak up. It's a public comment. It is not regarding the tribal concerns, which sound very valid to me, but in, in a sense, it does. it does. The Chevron considerations for consulting for tribal representatives for each of the tribes, that was a pretty nice measure. And not so for what Chevron has done for the seals that have lived here long before Chevron. Chevron could afford to hire a harbor seal expert. I've tried recommending some. There's Sharon, Dr. Sharon Mellon of NOAA. Her associate, Sarah Chin, that just completed the first in 12 years aerial survey of the harbor seals. And even they agree that the numbers are dropping. So our harbor seals are, they're pretty fragile right now. Our community loves these seals. Visitors love these seals. I know that the Chevron decommissioning is a gift to us. I appreciate the decommissioning, but I wish more attention would be paid to monitoring what's going on. And it takes an expert to recognize the stages of a disturbance. And there are no harbor seal experts among, among Seal Watch, certainly not among Padre. I mean, that's, I hope Chevron realizes that that was pretty poor advice they were getting from that consultant. Anyway, moving on, I hope all goes well for the seals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Please. And if you can fill out a speaker slip when you're done.
Hi, my name is Patricia French, and I would also like to bring up a seal question. This is, I appreciate everything that everyone is attempting to do in terms of protecting the land and doing the best thing. My question is, are we sure this is not going to devastate the seal colony? Are we certain that we are going to have a colony after the decommissioning? That's my question number one. And my question number two is, not being an expert in any of this, is there a way to not deal with the, with the pipes that are going underneath the rookery? Or do that in the last phase? Or do it in some way? I'm just trying to think of, are we certain that we are going to still have a seal colony after the decommissioning? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else in the audience, we will now move over to Zoom. Do we have anyone on Zoom, Brian?
We do have one raised hand from iPad Mini. iPad Mini, go ahead.
It's Susan Byron-David's iPad Mini. And I just wanted to express my thanks to City Council and staff. I don't think they're allowing you to go home these past two weeks, and I'm hoping at some point you do get to do that. You've done an incredible job, as I'm watching from afar. I hadn't planned on talking about the seals, but just regarding the seals, best practices would have two monitors coordinating via phone or walkie-talkie, one on the beach and the other at the bluff top. This worked quite successfully during the repair of a non-Chairon pipeline a few years back. And as a clarification, are the pipelines coming onshore adjacent to the seals related to Gale and Grace? And now for my original comments. I have two concerns that have not been addressed through the years regarding the Chevron-Venico operations. I brought them up in the EIR process, but still they have not been fully addressed. First, a piece of equipment about 20 to 30 feet tall was installed in the southeast corner of the plant, tall and silver. Nothing in the city documents I've seen identify that piece of equipment. It was installed around 1980, approximately the same time as Gale and Grace became operational. The tower was removed somewhere in the early 2000s. There were no permits for removal that I could ever find. I was told permitting to put it in had to do with an offshore platform, most likely Gale and Grace. I was also told that chemicals involved were of concern. I can at least verify that because every so often Chevron and Venico published warnings in the Carpinteria Herald, Coastal View News, and the Santa Barbara News Press. These were warnings telling the community that a cancer-causing footprint was leaving the boundaries of the plant. Maps showed that area to be over the western edge of Teetime. The restrictions on development on the area of Teetime were later removed, but it was there for a number of years in city maps. For years, and now during decommissioning, I have asked for that piece of equipment to be fully investigated, identified, and that documents be produced that show the removal was done properly and the soils cleaned up. That question was never answered during the EIR process. Number two, under Venico's operation, we often saw emergency permits because of a lack of maintenance. One of the issues was what they called a cathodic well failure. That was the name given during the hearing. Approval was given by the city, but I decided to appeal the work to the Coastal Commission only because we were seeing so many emergency permit requests from Venico, and I was worried about safety. Sorry. After discussion with former Community Development Director Jackie Campbell, I agreed not to file an appeal if the old well would be removed and cleaned up when the new well was put in. I trusted all that was done, but could never find any documentation. I took the opportunity during the EIR process for decommissioning to bring that up. It wasn't addressed in the EIR. And after I questioned that publicly, I was told by your consultant-
Hi, Susan. You've ran out of time, but if you can wrap up within the next few seconds?
I'm wrapping up. Thank you. I'm just having trouble with my iPad. It wasn't, it wasn't addressed, and I questioned that publicly. I was told by your consultant that there was no such thing as a cathodic well, but there was cathodic protection. So I went home and Googled cathodic well, and guess what? There is such a thing, and they even show diagrams of them. So why wasn't this addressed in the EIR? Cathodic wells, according to the California Department of Water Resources, can be huge polluters, particularly if they are not abandoned correctly. I think it's important for the community to fully, be fully assured of all the, that all issues are addressed during decommissioning. Some agencies must or should have records regarding the two equipments I mentioned. I care deeply about my community, and anything I can do to make it a healthy and safe place is my goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, that concludes a comment on Zoom.
Okay, I will go ahead and close the public comment period, and I will bring it back to staff if there are any responses that you all would like to provide the council with.
Madam Mayor, council members, as we pointed out earlier, the 48 pages that were submitted were submitted sometime before noon today. So we don't necessarily have responses to each and every one of those things that were presented. There's a lot of, there are a lot of comments about a variety of things. So what we intend to do is try to address the majority of the concerns that we found, and we'll try to take turns in responding to those. And then if there are things that you have picked up from the various commenters that you want us to respond to, we will make an attempt to respond to those as well. So we'll give this a try and see how far along we get with responding to some of the concerns. We prepared a few slides, and this is the first one of them. And this is trying to basically respond to the idea that there's no mitigation measures. And all of these things that we have, the Cultural Resources Management Plan, the Awareness Program, monitoring is mitigation because in some cases you're not aware of the exact location, or you don't know exactly what you're going to find. And it's important also to note and to understand that we're talking about a site that has been substantially disturbed through the years. There has been an oil and gas plant operation there for 75 years. There are pipelines that were built underground. There were a number of facilities, foundations, buildings, a gas processing facility. So the site is substantially deteriorated. There has been substantial disturbance. There was substantial disturbance in the site prior to the 1950s when they started construction. There were substantial disturbances as a result of construction of the railroad right of way. And there was substantial disturbance throughout modern times, and those are delineated in the environmental document as part of the baseline discussion. So when we talk about exclusion zones, for example, we know that there are areas where there is no need because there is no remediation that is required in those areas, or excavation that is required in those areas because there aren't any pipelines that need to be excavated. And so those zones will be excluded. And it's important to exclude them because there may be some, still some intact resources left. And avoidance is mitigation as part of the process of mitigating cultural resources. Data recovery is also part of mitigation. Curation is part of mitigation. All the things that we have put forth as part of the, as part of the conditions of approval and the mitigation measures are intending to mitigate the impacts to less than significant. And there are a number of explanatory statements within the document that basically state that the mitigation measures as proposed will mitigate the impacts to less than significant. So we are, we recognize that there are some sensitive resources here, but we also recognize that we have the tools at our disposal by virtue of the experiences that all the archaeologists that are part of this project, and also the contributions of the various tribes that are participating in the preparation of the Cultural Resources Management Plan to ensure that those impacts are properly mitigated. So I have included here a sentence from the EIR from page 4427 where it talks about how the impacts are being mitigated. It also, there is another statement where each of the mitigation measures describes how these impacts are being mitigated. So I'm just essentially trying to refute the idea that these impacts are not mitigated. I also have to point out that while Mr. Redondo points that there is no mitigation, he doesn't present any additional mitigation to us. He's not providing, he's not telling us, you're not doing it correctly, do this. That do this is not available. He's not providing us that. There is no mitigation measures that he's providing that would actually mitigate the impact. Now, is it because we have provided all the measures that are dealing with that already as part of the EIR? We like to believe that that's the case because we have done our due diligence and prepared this document to ensure that that's the case. There is a comment about the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. And I find it very curious because there is a whole chapter in Section 7 of the EIR that is the MMRP that you heard about repeatedly. And it's a requirement of SEQA. We could not prepare an EIR without an MMRP. And as a result of that MMRP, there is a Condition 40 within the series of conditions in your staff report and in your resolutions that specifically state that you have to adopt the MMRP and adopt all the conditions of approval that precede the document, and also all the mitigation measures within the EIR. So there is a disconnect somewhere, but the Cultural Resources Management Plan is part of the mitigation monitoring program. And I know that we're throwing you with a lot of different acronyms and things, but to be clear, the point about the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program not being adopted or not having the Cultural Resources Management Program in it, it's a fallacy. There is, there is no there there. There is a lot of conversation. I think we talked a little bit about this as part of the staff's presentation and the question and answers as to how there are policies that become standard mitigation. So I will not belabor this unless you have questions specific to this issue. There is also some discussion about who proposes the mitigation measures. And I think we talked about it earlier. If there is, in some cases in EIRs, we put something together that is called applicant-proposed mitigation measures. In this particular case, there are design features that an applicant has. Chevron has a series of design features as to how they're going to go about the project. So what we do is we look at what they propose. We analyze the impacts based on each of the issue areas that could be affected as part of the proposed project, and then we come up with mitigation. The mitigation measures are all coming from the analysis that is done in the environmental document, and obviously is based on the project description that the applicant has. Again, we're trying to address some of the concerns without completely understanding where the disconnect is. Again, we talked about deferred mitigation. This comes from the SEQA guidelines. It is not deferred mitigation if agency commits itself to the mitigation, adopts specific performance standards that the mitigation will achieve, identify the types of potential actions that can feasibly achieve that performance standard. And all of these things are part of the mitigation measures that we're proposing as part of the project. Again, we talked about this extensively earlier about the regulatory requirements being considered mitigation. I think there is some conversation about the seal rookery, and if you want us to touch upon that a little bit, I mean, there are a number of requirements to attend to protect the seals. We heard some concerns about whether the population will survive. I think we're all concerned about the seals. We all recognize that have been a decrease in seals population, not just in Carpinteria, but up and down the coast. And there are many scientists trying to understand the reasoning behind the seals, diminution of population. There has been disturbance in the past. There have been construction and repairs of the pier in the past, and the seals have come back. What we're attempting to do, and there is a number of requirements that you see as part of the wildlife-sensitive training, where even the type of clothing that they will wear is codified. Nothing will be left on the beach after the workday. We have tried to come up with every, people walk slowly so that they will not spook the seals. I mean, every possible aspect of mitigation that can be considered has been added to the seal mitigations to ensure that we try to protect the seals as much as possible. And so there are some tensions here. We see that there's a decrease in population that is unrelated to this project. We have seen the seals respond well to disturbance in the past in this area, and they have always come back. And we hope and expect that the mitigation measures that are put in place will be sufficient to ensure that they will continue to thrive here. I think that's all we have. I don't know, Cody, if you wanted to respond to some of the-
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add a couple of quick comments on, on some of the, sort of the three main legal issues that were raised in Mr. Redondo's comments. The first was, was Mr. Redondo's comment that confidentiality only applies to location of cultural resources. We did look into that. The SEQA Section 2108 2.3 provides actually that any information, including but not limited to, location, description, use of tribal cultural resources submitted by a Native American tribe during the environmental review process is confidential. And so certainly as the CRMP is finalized, the city can further explore whether, you know, portions of the CRMP or, you know, redacted versions of the CRMP can be disclosed with, either with consent of the tribes or if it's determined that- either with consent of the tribes, or if it's determined that portions of them are not fully covered by those confidentiality provisions. But based on our reviews, you know, it was that the CRMP was based entirely on information provided by California Native American tribes during environmental review process, and that's why that was kept confidential. With regards to deferred mitigation, CEQA does generally prohibit deferring mitigation to a later time. What that's aimed at getting at is, you know, an EIR merely stating that the city's going to prepare mitigation at a later time, and that's going to be sufficient, but not providing any information as to what that mitigation would include. However, as Luis put up on the slide, CEQA does, and a long line of cases acknowledge that mitigation measures can be deferred if the lead agency commits to implementing those mitigation and adopts specific performance standards. And so here, cultural resources, the first mitigation measure is the one that requires implementation of a CRMP. That the ER then sets forth 11 very specific performance standards that that CRMP has to include and incorporate, and then the city has an opportunity to review that CRMP and approve it, ensuring that it satisfies those specific standards. And so accordingly, it's staff's position that that, you know, those mitigation measures satisfy the requirements of CEQA and don't constitute impermissibly deferred mitigation. And then finally, Mr. Arredondo raised a comment regarding that the EIR didn't satisfy the analysis required under the Lotus case. And so the Lotus case, that was a California case that held that the EIR is required to identify and analyze the significance of impacts before proposing mitigation. Basically, in that case, the EIR improperly incorporated mitigation measures into the description of the project, but didn't go through that kind of two-step, what are the impacts before mitigation, and then what are the impacts after mitigation? Here, the EIR includes a very lengthy analysis of project impacts prior to imposition of mitigation, pages, I think it's 215 to 241, so 26 pages discussing the project, environmental setting, existing cultural resources, and the potential impacts of the project on those resources. And then it includes a robust discussion of kind of the suite of mitigation measures, how they'll mitigate those impacts. For example, requires high-resolution mapping showing where the cultural resources would be, cultural awareness, resource training to help workers identify those, and then identifying exclusion zones, defense areas where decommission activities wouldn't be permitted, and discussing at length basically how those would impact, the potential impacts discussed previously in the EIR. And so the EIR then concludes with implementation of those mitigation, the project would result in less than a significant impact, and it's staff's position that the analysis and conclusions are supported by substantial evidence and comply with CEQA. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so this is an opportunity for the council to ask questions, and I just ask that you refrain from any deliberation until the hearing is closed. Would you like to start?
I had a question, but it was answered. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Not at this time.
Okay. I will-
Yes.
I apologize. You've explained the confidentiality piece a lot, and I just really want to make sure I completely understand it because this is my first go, and I really want to make sure that it makes complete sense. So the concern that Mr. Arredondo raised was, why are we being confidential about this? And what you're saying is that the confidentiality is to protect the location of things. Is this, am I getting this right?
Through the mayor? No, that's okay. So CEQA actually is slightly broader than that. It's protecting basically any information provided by the tribes, including location of cultural resources, but not limited to just location, just any information provided by the tribes during the environmental review process is confidential.
And so, because I feel like this feels like a big piece of it, is that there's information that isn't being shared broadly, and so is there some way that that could be overcome? I'm just curious.
Through the mayor's, council member mayor, so the EIR does include a pretty lengthy discussion of what the CRMP is required to include, and so that's the way that, you know, the public disclosure requirement is still satisfied by including that lengthy analysis. As to whether, you know, portions of the specific CRMP could later be disclosed, you know, the city can certainly further explore, you know, before it comes to final approval because the CRMP isn't, you know, up for final approval yet, can further explore whether there's portions of that that are not covered by the confidentiality requirements of CEQA and other statutes, or whether the tribes, the advising tribes would consent to, as they have with some excerpts, to disclosing excerpts of the CRMP or a redacted version. But we'll kind of have to take that as it comes. As the CRMP is finalized, we can review it and discuss with tribes.
Okay, thank you. Great, okay. I'd like to give the appellant, Mr. Arredondo, an opportunity to provide any responses to what you've heard in the presentations.
I might lift over here. Yes. Oh, thank you. I appreciate being able to come in and say something. Since we're on the confidentiality, let me clarify. You are right about location, and what he does say is correct in part of all information. However, if you read that law, just go to the bottom, says in compliance with Government Code 7500, something, whatever, whatever. And I posted that on my display. That government code specifically refers to location. All of this information about confidentiality is based upon the Archaeological Resource Preservation Act of 1979, where you can't give out information about sites to prevent looting. The discussion of we're going to protect policies, procedures, methods of monitoring has no bearing, none. But it's being used as a blanket cover because they don't expect you to go read Government Code 7500. They want you to take it at that face value. That's why I presented that on the display, to show you it has to do with all of this information. Every other agency, BLM, Caltrans, Park Service, all release CRMP information, they just exclude the site location information. Now, if we really want to get technical about this, when the draft EIR was first released, what was it, December 5th, I think it was, or 6th or something? That document included the technical report from Padre Consultants, copied. They were so egregious that they just copied the technical report. All archaeological technical reports are classified as sensitive. And when this issue was raised, I sent an email, I said, "What are you doing? You can't make this a public document. It's protected in an ARPA. ARPA doesn't qualify, it's not a federal thing." No, that's not it. You can't release location information. They had loci, they had exact locations where we found the monos and the lithics, and everything in that document was made public. It wasn't until a week later, the Friday, the 15th, I think it is, of December, that they redacted it and have what you have now. They took that information out. If you really want to get technical, anything that's confidential and once it's made public, it is public, no longer confidential. That's the way the law is written. If we really want to go down that road, now you're going to talk about we can't release the CRMP because it has location information that was previously released? It's ridiculous. I mean, you guys can go forward with this, but everything that I've cited, and I can tell you haven't read my paperwork, page 37, "Solution to Tribal Cultural Resources and Preservation Option," this is significant. One of the things that's brought up is that this site is pretty much well-disturbed, right? Building activities, I saw that working out there. I know what's out there. I can tell you where there is potential impact, intact resources, but it's so disturbed. When they built this thing, they pushed a lot of stuff around. One of the things in archaeology is, in order for something to meet the historical standards, it must have integrity, be in its original site location. Once you move stuff around, no longer has integrity. If it doesn't have integrity, it no longer is a unique archaeological resource. If it's not a unique archaeological resource, CEQA says you don't have to care about it. It's not significant. So what is a significant impact? We're going to disturb these non-unique archaeological resources? We're not supposed to talk about it in CEQA if it's not significant. However, since AB 52 came out, there's a bill and there's a code, it's in there, that says that if a tribe during consultation considers that non-unique archaeological resource significant, the city or the lead agency will treat it as a significant impact. And that's what the tribe did back in 2023. They said, "Yeah, all this stuff's significant." So from a scientific view, these resources aren't going to meet historic preservation standards. But from a cultural view, they're important to us. In my job in the last 19 years, this has been the biggest problem to mitigation measures. No one ever talks about, what do you do with this cultural stuff? What we do informally is, monitors, we collect this stuff, we keep it in one place on the property, and at the end of the project, we ask the owner, can we re-bury it here so that it stays with the land? Every tribe person that you speak with will say, "That's what we want. We don't want it to go to museum, a repository. We want it to stay with our ancestors because it's their things." My suggestion on page 37 was, under CEQA, once a tribe claims it's a tribal cultural resource, the lead agency has to treat it as such and provide, if they make recommendations or mitigation measures to address that, they have to use it. That means, one of the things under preservation, archaeological historic preservation, there's a code in there that talks about what I'm arguing, preservation or data recovery. Under the suite of preservations, there's several different options, and one of the options is that you're going to cap the site, you're going to turn it into open space, you're going to leave the site in perpetuity, and you're going to allow the tribes to come in and practice and worship and et cetera. It has that option that's in there. What I'm suggesting as a solution is, because these are treated as tribal cultural resources claimed by the city, that these items that are picked up that are not unique, and they're going to be tribal, they be collected, saved, stored, at the end of the project, re-buried into a piece of property, GPS, site record update, and on top of that, you add to the title deed a designation of, in perpetuity, this spot shall not be disturbed. We did that with one of the Galita projects, and 30 years later, someone tried to dig it up, and I had to pull up the record and say, "No, you can't do that. It's tied to the title deed." Now, you kind of, you can impose that as a mitigation measure as a lead agent. You can say, "We're going to create a preservation option for tribal cultural resources to do this, and it fits within preservation guidelines." It's not exact because we're not keeping it in its original location, but that's due to scientific reasons. We're doing it for culture, and it fits. That's the solution. Now, does that fix everything else? No, but it's one step better. Allow those resources to be re-interred into the property. That is on page 37 of the document that I sent to you. Sounds like nobody read this stuff, too, which I don't blame you because it's very long and lengthy. I have to go back to advising tribes. Like I said, they're not advising, they're nonprofit organizations. Outside of conclusion of AB 52, December, they're just organizations. You keep using the term as tribe, informally they are, but in an official capacity, they are not, which means they don't afford any protections under confidentiality or anything, really, their ability to advise. One of the big things here in this area, the Chumash Territory, we have independent monitors. They're not affiliated with these groups. Why? It's too much infighting. But many of the times is that people that do monitoring, like me, we've been doing this so long that we're not, we're not about politics, we're about preserving the resource. And the people that we have to deal with, they don't get it. They don't get what we do. A lot of times we do stuff for free, but it's all about the resource. Me spending the last week writing this stuff, nobody's paying me to do this. I'm doing it because I care passionately about the laws and the regulations that are being implied. Some of the things that staff has said is not accurate, I'll use that word, and it's only because there are details that they don't know about, or they're just doing broad strokes. For example, when this project came through, the city has 14 days to send out a notice. Did they do it in 14 days? I don't know. There's no discussion on it, they should have that in there. And then the tribe has 30 days to respond. The tribe in San Andres responded 17 days after the 30-day lead line, but that's okay. We submitted a request to engage in tribal consultation before the second draft was released, but yet we were told its consultation has been concluded and have been left out. Now, consulting with agents or private property folks, that's not consultation. That's what I like to say, "Meet and confer," because you don't want to mix up those terminologies because consultation has a legal meaning to it. So when you're talking about Chevron consulting with these groups, that's not correct. Anyways, I didn't expect anyone to really read all of this technical stuff, but it's in there. It's been proven by court cases, and I'm 1,000% confident that it would stand up going further. What I would like to see is that these procedures are done in accordance with the codes and policies. It's a learning curve, though, and I have a hard time shortening things up, so it's the native in me. I said earlier that I would be back. I can already tell there's a learning curve. I'm going to have to educate you all on how this works. I did this with the county, they ended up having to hire an archaeologist to be a planner to address my concerns. Eventually, they changed their, what is it called, cultural resection policies, and I haven't had to watch them, but I am going to keep close eye on what's going on here. This is what I do. 20 years of reviewing this stuff, I know what I'm talking about. So we can spin it, slide it, but the decision will be up to someone else in the end, eventually. I don't have anything else to add other than that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council? Chevron, the applicant, do you have any responses you would like to share?
I can be very brief. At the risk of exposing you to another code citation, I just wanted to highlight, there's been a lot of conversation about confidentiality, right? So this is from the Public Resources Code. Additionally, unless the tribe providing information expressly consents to public disclosure, the project applicant, Chevron, must also maintain the confidentiality of all information exchanged, shall not disclose to a third-party confidential information regarding tribal cultural resources. That is why we cannot share the CRMP. I wanted to highlight for you also that I'm disappointed that there's much muddying of the waters in how this consultation versus advisement process has gone on. We have sought and continue to seek meaningful and trust-built relationships with not only the state-recognized tribes, the federally-recognized tribes that we have been talking about, which have authority vested in them by the state outside of the consultation process, but also with tribal community members, like the appellant or others in the community that have long histories doing monitoring and have deep personal connections to these sites. We have engaged with all of those people in addition to complementing the city's AB 52 process. We're quite proud of the way that we're engaging on this matter, and we hope that that comes through as we round out this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council? None? Okay. We will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will bring it back to the council for deliberation.
Well, I'll start off. I appreciate the concerns that were raised here today. I think it's helpful to have this conversation in terms of the grounds for the appeal. I think that the case law presented to us by staff and by consultant was compelling and indicating that regulatory compliance can also be a mitigation measure. I feel like that was pretty clearly outlined. And I also appreciate the robust process that was used beyond just the AB 52 requirements to engage multiple tribes of Native Americans for feedback. I think it sounds like that was done very thoroughly. And then additionally regarding some of the comments brought up about the seal rookery, I do appreciate the concerns about that, but I am impressed with the multi-step, multi-pronged monitoring approach that's been outlined for that. So I feel like, given all of that, I would be in favor of denying this appeal.
I'll make a few comments on this one. I do understand the process that Mr. Arredondo is coming from. I was in Guatemala just this year, had to evaluate similar situation where remains were disturbed in large quantities, they were buried actually in mass graves that were produced and done by the Guatemalan- They were buried, actually, in mass graves that were produced and done by the Guatemalan government in 1980s. Pretty touching. The hardest part about that, I would say, is that they were displaced, they were relocated, they were buried directly in these mass graves. Sensitivity of that in culture. I understand the situation in both cases. However, in my opinion, the decision-making process of those remains, those artifacts, those items, still remain the property of the people themselves, the tribes, the people of that heritage. Knowing that and saying that, I understand where Mr. Arredondo is coming from. It would be a benefit if he were to actually maybe oversee or assist in the educational component of those people that were going to be monitoring the site specifically. It would help quite a bit. There should be a solution coming up. Since we had our consultants actually on ground, they were contracted by Chevron, they do and they should remain the primaries because they are the ones from this location. As locations start moving around a little bit, so do the people, so do the cultures, so do the tribes. So knowing that, at this point in time, I would also lean towards denying this. However, I would like to see a solution put in place where if, in fact, it is the decision to be kept confidential or the decision to be shared only by the tribe itself, it would be the property of the tribes that are locating in that, and it would be their decision whether they keep it within their families, that tribe-specific, or if they wish to share some portions of those artifacts. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I do have a question. How would that, is that something that we could direct in this, in this hearing? Like, could the council ask for Mr. Arredondo to be a part of this process as a consultant?
Madam Mayor, I don't know that that's something that you can direct. I think that there are some private matters that need to be resolved. With regards to the disposition, there are requirements, the disposition of remains, that is codified in the public record, and it's also codified as part of the conditions of approval where the next of kin will be identified, and that tribe would then decide what the ultimate fate of those remains will be. That is already contemplated within the conditions of approval and the management plans here.
And I think I would be wary of us recommending any individual to be a part of the process that is going on with the external parties that are here, just, it seems like that, that they have processes in place for when folks want to be involved either as a monitor. It sounds like there's a pretty clear process that can go through the tribes that are, that are, have been consulted with, if you want, from what I understand, if you want to clarify that, but it sounds like there is a process in place for Mr. Arredondo to get involved if he wants to.
Before we get too far, that was a suggestion, not a recommendation.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I think that Mr. Arredondo is at liberty to approach the different tribes and to consult with them and to offer his services to them. My understanding is he has a thorough knowledge of the site. He has been involved as part of Chevron's efforts when they have done work out there, and so he is intimately familiar, and he is a qualified Native American monitor. So I think it behooves him to approach the tribes and offer them his services at the time when the actual monitoring is going on. Nothing in what your actions preclude that from occurring.
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Nomura. This is an incredibly sensitive topic and an incredibly sensitive piece of property that it's difficult to, I mean, it's difficult to sort of put it into words, and I can really see and understand that, you know, I had the opportunity to walk the property, and I can see, I can see the significance. I feel that what staff has presented to us is a robust plan to respect and honor that. And I feel that that is underlined for me by the multiple letters and recommendation from multiple different tribes, and I hope that, you know, it goes along with what Ms. Mailhew said, which is, you know, Chevron has said that they'll have a SEALs/Marine Specialist to coordinate with SEAL Watch, and she's asking for a Harbor SEAL expert. And I think it's, I'm not going to equate the two, but it's similar. Like, I think that that covenant of trust comes from bringing the best people to represent and protect these, you know, cultural resources. I am inclined to agree with my colleagues and to deny this appeal.
You know, I'm for sure not a SEQA expert, and, you know, there's a lot of rhetoric and lexicon going on here that's just, and so it's really difficult to, you know, sort through it all. But we do know, as I think my colleague, Councilmember Mayor Luto, there's, from what we already do know, there's a ton of stuff there. There's just got to be a lot of stuff there, and we got to trust that you guys will do it properly, and I'm sure you will. So I'll concur with denying the project, I mean, the appeal. Sorry.
I'd like to just say, it is very clear that the appellant, Mr. Arredondo, is not only passionate, but is, you know, well-informed about not only the space, but, you know, I think it's based off of this report that you provided us today. I, you know, you've clearly put your time and energy and effort into this, so it is something that you're passionate about, and I think that is great. In terms of what we've heard this evening, I really do feel as though the city has gone through the proper steps and channels in terms of the mitigation efforts, similar to what Councilmember Clark has mentioned. You know, there has to be trust in that you guys will do this to the best of your ability to ensure that we conserve, you know, this area's property as best as we can, and you consult with the experts that are available to us. And so with that, I would also concur with the rest of my colleagues on the dais, and I will ask for a motion.
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 6415 to deny the appeal, accept and certify the EIR, select the proposed project plus Hilda and Hazel Pipeline Removal Alternative as a preferred project, and approve the development plan and coastal development permit 21-2128- DP slash CDP for the Chevron Carpentry Oil and Gas Facility Decommissioning Project.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and I'll ask for a roll call vote. Brian?
Councilmember Solarsano?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Nomura?
Aye.
And Mayor Alakon?
Aye, and we will officially adjourn.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Just a real quick comment on this one. Looking at the EIR, the package presented by Chevron, they've done outstanding job on this report, on the work that they have set forward to do. There are some sensitive areas in this one here, and I am hoping that we have assurances and guarantees that these will be gone through as directed and as proposed. My concern is, is that we may have some challenges, some issues with the CO population, things like that is my major problem. So knowing that, hopefully, there's going to continue to be a public outreach from Chevron, making sure that everything is up to the recommendations that you've presented for us and for the city.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We will officially adjourn the hearing at 7:29. Thank you.